Yeah, the marshes huge. I'd like to see ice for bay.
I think there's something in that. Our.
I was like.
And I think that's what Jim was worried about bathroom breaks.
Yeah.
Towards the end, we're struggling for another short story. I did some features. I remember wasn't all it. It was about. In that I heard that white guys. Spray tractor. The white car. And German. Came out of.
When I was in.
So I indicated that German barns were more likely to be decorated than New England.
Okay, I'm going to call our regular session to order. We'll skip the pledge because we already did that. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Arons is asking. Mr. Behrens.
Present.
Mr. Christensen.
Present.
Mr. Frerick.
Here.
Mr. Govout.
Here.
Ms. Lautner.
Present.
Mr. Noonan.
Here.
Mr. Popa.
Here.
Ms. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
Any public comment?
Most of you know that I'm Steve Steyer and the president of Cleveland County Historic Preservation Society. Working on the Ford Farm Barn at Miles Kimmerley Park for about five years now. And we've got to the point where we've come on the joint committee with Representatives of History and our group. We've met twice so far. And we look forward to meeting with that group again in the next six weeks.
Sure.
And I'm really happy to see your names up there now. And I'll press the envelope and see if we can have coffee the next time.
Construction Coats does have coffee down at the end of the hall.
Steve, is that something you want to schedule now?
Sure, if you want to.
Or get an idea from us or? I can add it as an agenda item. We would not do it.
First part of February.
Sure.
Okay, sure.
Let's put that as.
Six.
Six, okay. We'll talk. I'll put it as one A on the agenda so we can get to it right away. Okay. Moving on to our agenda additions and deletions. We'll have the barn committee meeting date as one A. Is there any other additions or deletions? You gonna have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion. Support it.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, action items. First, we have approval of financials.
We came in at a hundred and ninety and a half percent. I think it was due mostly to tractor.
Did monies get put on also along with the tractor?
I thought it did, but I can't.
Steve, did you mean monies to cover the three percent?
Well, it seemed like. It seemed like the tractor gets used a lot of different ways and it got put on our budget. But did money get put in our budget along with the tractor expense in our budget? I don't know. I can't. It's a fuzzy memory, I guess.
The cost of the tractor work went in under capital outlays. Is that where it ended up?
Yep.
And that's where we didn't have enough left in there, did we, to cover that? Because we spent most of that on that Veronica Valley driveway. Right?
Yeah. I think the tractor was thirty-nine thousand.
Casey, would you like an explanation?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I mean, would you like me to go get Jen and have her explain?
It would be nice, yeah.
Because I'm trying to remember all amendments and transfers. And you don't remember if there was a parks one. Jenny present those? Jen present them. I'm just going to.
Is this not just a Soul Parks tractor, isn't it, Jen?
Is there any time available for that tractor during the season?
For rent?
For power lead?
While we're waiting for that, is there any other questions or comments for Scott on the budget? For the bills?
After the tractor work, was that a repair or was that an additional equipment for the tractor?
It's a new tractor.
That's a new tractor.
Is it primarily a maintenance tractor then?
It is. And I thought it was just me. I said that and Jen came up. Wow, it's. And so it's stuck. And we also got stuck with a pair of old tractors as well.
But these are actually maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance.
Hello.
How are you doing, Jen?
Hello. I'm doing well, thank you.
Putting you on the hot seat. So I told her a little bit about what we have, but do you want to ask it in a more formal question or whatever?
We're wondering about the tractor that was purchased and how it, I mean, it's going to hit our budget and it puts us over budget. Was there an amendment and transfer for that?
There was amendment made to your budget. And I did not pull it from my fund balance. I believe I pulled it right from extra general fund revenue.
Okay.
So you're not going to see it hit anything.
Okay.
I didn't repeat anything.
So our overage is just because of us being over?
Your overage is, I made sure that your board motions matched the expenses that you have because you have large capital purchases and improvements to your parks. I believe one of those twenty-nine thousand dollars for progress savings. Correct?
Yeah, it wasn't budgeted for that much and it was over.
Correct. But your board motions stated you have an amount that you could spend. So that is what I amended for your per the board motion to increase your capital outlay.
Perfect.
So were we charged with all of the tractor expense or a percentage or fraction? Was it?
I don't think they use that much. Do you get a transaction history on there?
It's all of it.
The whole tractor? The whole tractor was yours then?
Plus the repair of the old one.
It was fine. Yeah, I would prefer that it goes onto the general fund and not to your budget and going to building grounds. If that tractor is used at your location. Was it used? Was the old tractor used as well?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, but was that tractor then also put towards the trade-in on the new tractor? That means.
Oh, okay.
I see.
So your capital outlay will be the value of the tractor and the value of the tractor that was sold.
Okay.
And it will be obtained in the capital outlay as a Parks and Rec purchase.
Got it.
Makes sense to me. Any, is there any other questions for yet? That answers my questions. I don't ask anybody else.
You had any others, Scott? Nope. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, no problem.
Anything you want to point our eye to, Scott, as far as something stands out as different from normal or something we should take a peek at or think about for next year?
Not really. I don't know. Everything's got ours.
What's forestry suppliers incorporated?
It's a supply place. He's hardware.
Okay.
We buy tools from clothing.
How come we use SOS so much?
SOS analytical. Do you want water testing?
And SOS.
It's required by the state four times a year and each well.
But how many wells do we got? It looks like they're on there for like twenty times or something.
What's quarterly thing for park?
Twenty.
You're right.
But the billing last year came through like three months.
He's got a great eye. Just like that.
Just like seven. Yeah.
That's who I was.
I kept seeing him in claims in the council. I kept asking him if they were, like, we just did these last month. Why are they in again? And it was.
Are we happy with true green?
We will be going up for RP one here this year. It's.
Oh, yeah, I saw it. Is that, that would be true green and then spinning two or just is it a different thing?
Probably go up and put it on both, right? Or RP at least.
I would interrupt the RP.
And you know, some of this, if I may, you know, like salary, salary was over. But we did a mid-year raise and bonus. So that's probably a portion of that. That's not necessarily Park's fault. That was fault of his location.
The stipend comes out of that.
Are there any other questions on the financials? Get a motion to approve?
I move we approve the financials as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Ross?
We had, just real quick, we had Bill Green as a part timer. Was that out of our budget too? That worked, it seemed like that worked really well, right?
And so did the brands.
And other things? Scott, keep going.
Right.
Yeah, there's.
We have.
More work than can get done.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Financials are approved. Okay, moving on to the barn committee meetings, meeting date. Did you have a date in mind, Steve? Don said that he asked, he's going to be gone the sixth through the thirteenth, right? How about?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Who is on that committee for Parks and Rec?
Myself, Don, Rick was on there because he was from Miles Kimmerley. And Scott's on there as representative. I think that was all, yeah.
That's my.
And you were an alternate, I believe.
I believe so too, yeah. So I didn't know if you were going to replace Rick on that committee or?
Well, I think it was, wasn't it the whole Miles Kimmerley committee?
Maybe it was, okay.
Because Steve.
Minus me.
Right, Steve's not on it, but it was the two other members from the committee.
So you will, Cam will be on it?
Surely, if she's willing.
So you, okay, your calendar too, then?
It's another meeting to go to, but we don't meet very often.
Sure.
Okay.
And I would remain as alternate. I'd be happy to remain as alternate.
Okay, great.
What's the date on that again, please?
That's what we're talking about.
Somebody's gone like sixth through the what?
Sixth through the thirteenth, you said?
I'm away on the sixth through the thirteenth.
What about Thursday, the second?
Groundhog's Day.
What's that?
Groundhog's Day, works.
Can't take a break for the groundhog. Steve, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Afternoon would be better for me, but I can be, I can flex things around. Three o'clock, would that be all right?
Where?
Probably here. Do you want to meet here, Steve?
Yeah.
It's cold out. Three o'clock, Thursday, the second, barn committee. It's here? Yes. We'll get, try and get a room reserved if we can.
And we'll try to.
Okay. Last, the last time we had it downstairs, where were we downstairs? We met here once and then at the barn once. Okay. Moving on, the Parks Administrative Assistant.
Okay, I wanted to address everybody's. I'm the only one that only gets to get the. That means that in front of everybody's packet, there is no, either. There is, there should be an excerpt on the parks from the capital improvement plan. But then you have the community parks recreation plan twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And I was looking at that title and I'm thinking, is it really almost the end of five years? So I just wanted to put on everyone's radar two things to review it with your respective committees, what you can move forward with this year. And also the fact that going into twenty twenty-four, it's quite a laborious process to get a park plan developed and approved and approved to the state so that we're eligible for grants.
Yeah, the last, yeah.
Yeah, that was.
Did we get Gosling to back up with the last one, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Clause, right?
Right.
Timeframe wise, we need a year to put one together.
Start beginning, right? Do you mean, right, twenty twenty-four?
Okay.
Because you have to publish hearings and it's got to be submitted to the state. There's a lot of that before it. And hopefully, whether we do end up working there, developing, whether we do it in-house or not. I just want to make sure it's done right and it's not.
So for this twenty twenty-three, the prep thing to do would be align our current master plans, our CIPs and our budgets.
Yes.
Have all three of those stamp pieces aligned going into the prep for the twenty twenty-four.
Well, by how correctly, the Veronica Valley Park Plan is in pretty good shape. Is it miles that we have to go out and hand develop?
The, the last time we had, we hired Gosling to help us put together a bona fide plan for Veronica Valley and then move forward and try for a grant. And they got into the process and realized that we, we were going out of sync with our state five-year plan. So that morphed into them helping us with the five-year plan along with the bona fide park plan for Veronica Valley. We've talked about a possibility of redoing the Miles plan. And I know Don has probably got that high on the agenda for Miles this coming year to hash that out and bring a recommendation back to this group, whether or not we are going to move forward and have a plan developed. The plan that's in place at Miles right now is we've been jockeying it around and we're not following it per se. And then there's the ten-acre piece that we do not have a plan for. So we're in the process, I think, at Miles, if I can speak to Miles, that we're thinking about, do we need to do that? And I think that would be done in twenty-three, in my mind, so that when we go into twenty-four, we don't have that on top of doing a five-year plan.
That makes sense. And so now putting the curtain for the board, so you want to get all your guts in the world. So when you build that, when you get all the documentation to incorporate it.
Which is, which is why I said I'll align the CIP with the plans all such. Because right now they're on sync.
We had, for old settlers, we had a plan we had put in place. I bet it's been over five years now. Because we have to concede, you know, included.
It might even, I think that would happen like.
Six through seven?
I don't even know if I was on the board when that was.
Yeah, Lori Leinhardt did it.
Yes.
So that was the first year that I was on the board because that's when she, yeah, that's right. That was right after the store.
She volunteered the time to put that together.
So how long ago was it? I mean, it's five years anyway, right?
At least, yeah.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think old settlers would probably be looking at, as a committee, looking at that plan, although it seemed pretty solid at the time. I don't know if it needs a major tweak or not, but that would be something to look at.
We should have a committee meeting and to look at it. It shouldn't take long. It's a pretty small park.
No, I think, I think old settlers is looking mighty fine with that.
I think so.
With the grub shack, the way it got proved and the chapel's still looking mighty fine.
The gazebo needs some attention.
We think gazebo needs attention. That's our main thing, yeah.
Good. Any other discussion on the plan? Okay, moving on to the stipend, the twenty twenty-three stipend.
Yeah, the board approved during their. The remainder of the agreement on stipend for the administrative services to me. It approved thirty-six hundred and then it broke into two thousand for retroactive payment for all the work done in twenty twenty-one. And then the remainder of sixteen hundred to me at the end of twenty twenty-two. So just keeping in the fact that it's been getting in the year, I thought it would be good to at least discuss it for this meeting so that when it comes to the budget process, it's in place, that it is in the budget. I'm pretty sure it is for this year for stipend for the administrative assistant.
May I ask a question? If you can remind me, Laurel, because I, I didn't remember us, you know, splitting it up. I remember us doing it. So the two thousand was for twenty twenty-one, sixteen hundred at the end of twenty twenty-two. Are you caught up through today?
The way the board approved it, yes.
Okay. So for twenty twenty-three, should we have a motion asking the board commissioners to do this or should? I think it is in the budget, but do you have to wait until the end of the year again for it? Or shouldn't you get a little bit every month or what should we be asking for?
There are rules when it comes to stipends for employees. And I think that's why they did it gradually. However, without getting into it too much, there was a discussion where kind of. Snowballed down the hill effect when Chief Deputy Kirk was approved for a large amount of money. And then they felt they really should bring the other chief deputies in the line. And so they both got a large increase and became salaried. However, my pay, which was the same amount as what they were getting paid, remained scattered.
Right.
And then we had a discussion internally about, well, if you were brought up to the same level as what chief deputies were, which I'm not sure why it wasn't, would you still want stipend? They said, well, no, it's not covering. So it would be good at this point to at least acknowledge that the stipend should be paid. And then if they ever revisit a salary issue mid-line position, I would make sure that the stipend would not be on the table anymore because I would be getting coffee saved properly. So my request to you at this point, because I can't imagine spending less than what you do for my services for someone outside.
Yeah.
Right.
You're planning to spend much more.
Right.
So as long as you have this one or assume that you, you, if you confirm that this is an annual stipend to me, then the board will know that part of the funding would go with the stipend.
Okay. You want a motion out of us for that?
Yeah, and I'm just, I concluded the last page of minutes from August eighteenth where they recommended to hire an administrative assistant for a park's rep. And it didn't have a timeframe involved, so I need to find that was on a tie to one year of time. So it just means reaffirming that motion. And then I can give it to my boss. I just want to make sure that in the year twelve, even though we didn't hear the budget before, I looked at the budgets, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, I think twenty twenty. And consistently, they show that sort of increase from twenty twenty-one forward. So they weren't forwarding into the park's rep. So my request is to at least consider the motion that you passed in August. And because it just was a position, and I am past as the administrative assistant, it doesn't have to game on me, it would go to me. And if, say, I got anybody of us, it would go to whoever the executive assistant is.
Sure. Well, I would recommend to the board commissioners that the Parks and Recreation Commission re-recommend, to reaffirm the appointment of an administrative assistant to assist and guide the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Any other discussion? Does that work, Laurel?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions?
When you said made a comment about timeframe, should we include a timeframe in the motion?
I wouldn't because I'm a fairly ethical and honest person. I'm the kind of person that if I have.
She says fairly.
I'm not even. If I've got a personal commitment tied into that, you know, to me, that's not ethically right. So I will only ask for the money if I feel they're right.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to committee reports, Miles Kimmerley first.
I have no formal report. I'm just happy I have a committee back. Welcome, Camerons.
Thank you.
And Steve and John Arons, he's not here today, but we'll get ahold of him. He was excused today, I hope.
I called to ask him and he said he forgot to get.
Anyway, we'll get together and we have several things to talk about, some of what Steve mentioned, and we'll get back with you the next meeting in February, having met.
Old settlers?
Nothing new to report. We just, Scott and I will continue to look for bouncies, plural, or maybe one bouncer.
Okay. Veronica Valley?
Can I back up? I'm sorry. There was number two on here. I couldn't notice. Veronica Valley Nursing Home Eastman up there. Laurel, did you have something on that? It's April twenty-three. It expires, I know that.
It's on the agenda.
That was last month, wasn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking through. Forget that.
Well, if you want to know the limit, we're still working. I have the Senate Council because we did a response back from China.
Okay.
You did or did not?
Yeah.
You got a response from him?
Yes, he sent it to Chad and we're set forward to.
Veronica Valley?
We did have a meeting today. Two key points of discussion, we still have a beaver problem at Veronica. Meaning still an active beaver that is still damming up the stream very effectively enough that the spread of the pond has continued. I am going to chase, have already started and have not heard back from Trapper Ron, but I'm going to really push him now because we may have another trapper interested. Scott also has some plan. also has some plan for destroying, tearing apart the dams, and the weather is appropriate for that work right now. So the key is, I've got to get Ron to, to answer a few questions, Trapper Ron, so I'm going to keep after him. I did contact him by text a week ago. I think it was exactly a week ago now, a couple of times, and I haven't heard from him. If you recall, he dislocated a shoulder, was planning to, that was a week to 10 days before Christmas. He was planning to take time off till about now to get back in there, but I, we've got to determine that and see if he will accept another trapper or exactly where his plan stands. The second point was, we received a letter from the Lake Leland, our Lake Association, expressing their concern about not really just Veronica Valley's ponds as a source of invasive water weeds, pond weeds that could get into Lake Leland, but offering their assistance in identifying weed growth there and identifying possible routes of mitigation. So I'm going to craft the first letter response. Laurel and I will then work together to get, very quickly get a response back to them saying, yes, we are interested in that, that partnership, specifically seeking to engage their assistance early on and then have, have them likely engage, at a meeting with the Pond Management Service. We've already engaged the past two years, Seven Lake Services, have them all there together so we can knock heads with both of their expertise in identifying what's there and potential management possibilities. And then Seven is, is the company we've hired before to do the, the chemical spray, which may be part of what they recommend. So those are the two things we talked about, and those are the two action steps we're going to take. That's it.
Any questions, Dave? Okay, moving on.
Mr. Chairman, I kind of do have one. And I know, I thought you used the goats again last year to help clean up some of the ditches longer, but I did notice there's a lot of tags in the ditch there on the road front edge, but by the wagon wheels. There's a lot of tags coming. Are they not keeping those down, or what is the deal with the?
We haven't. From the overflow pipe down to the creek, we had the road commission excavate the drainage ditch there, but we didn't have them go any farther. And since I've been on the commission, I don't think we've done anything, Melinda, with.
Didn't the goats, weren't the goats keeping them down?
Oh, we didn't have any goats, though. We didn't get, we didn't, we didn't succeed in getting that, that grant application. Now, the goat plan is the core of the application for 2% monies that we have now with the tribe. We haven't heard back. That would, actually, now that you bring it up, if we are to be awarded that grant, we'll want to discuss, Scott, you'll need to be involved in this certainly, and the Veronica Committee, where we would want to use them, because, yes, they'd go through that, that drainage ditch, probably in a day.
Yeah.
Although it's along the roadway, so I don't know what the management of them is like along the roadway. But we'd need input from the committee to determine what it is we'd want, because they wouldn't do the whole park. I mean, there's no way that grant's going to cover their, their, being there long enough to do all 90 acres with the, with the goats. But I'm glad you brought that up, because I hadn't thought about, wasn't in the plan that we talked about with the goat people two years ago. But that may be a real strong possibility there.
Is that just a service that these people provide with their goats, they're for rent kind of deal?
Yes.
Or is it specifically targeted, targeted toward like public parks?
No, not necessarily. City Girl Farm is the parent outfit in Detroit.
Okay.
Through circumstances of the people who started that, their need for goat milk for their kid led them to learn about goats, and City Girl Farm is an organization discovered that maintaining this goat herd and renting them out was a good income for the organization. So they do that pretty much around the lower peninsula, from what I understand. They were here last year.
They were at Port Oneida.
Port Oneida. And it's one reason Bill Watson gave us some hope from his side of it, that we might, might be awarded the grant, is because tribal members were witnessing the goat work at Port Oneida this past summer, and expressed to him real positive.
Were they there for locusts, or were they there for the?
Autumn olive. Mainly autumn olive this year. But they're not picky.
The one thing, the one thing they won't eat is grass.
It's true. Melinda, are you saying you would like all that brush out of that ditch?
Yeah.
But there aren't trees that brush that.
It's tags, I think.
It just goes red whips and stuff.
Yep, yep.
Because it probably could be mowed.
Yeah.
We got a brand new mower.
Oh.
$1,000 bucks.
Get some use out of it.
Want to done them out?
Yeah. No snow to plow. Get her done.
So you're saying you're wishing that that stuff's out of that creek?
I.
It's not the creek, it's a ditch.
It's a ditch, and that's, I mean, the fence is still there. You got the wagon wheels. It's beautiful to drive along and see that as you park, and it's all these tags are coming up there and looking.
They're going to come back. The coves clean the ditch all. We clean the ditch between the drain and the culvert. But do we go further up?
No, I have to be.
Have we mowed that, those tag elders before?
They can't. They will go up.
I think we can now.
John, are you talking on behalf of the road commission you would mow, or?
What was your question?
I'm not clear on who you're talking about mowing it. Is it the county or the road commission?
The road commission. Road commission. I'm not saying they will. I just want to know if you want it done, and if you want it done, we can go from there, but.
Make it easier for the goats to.
I'm not speaking for them. I'm just inquiring.
Okay, any other questions? Moving on, is there any public comment? Steve?
Yeah, I want to thank you for setting the date. I'm on the 13th, and now I ask you for the 20th. Two weeks later, the 16th, if that's true.
That's fine with me.
You have a groundhog date, do you? A date on Groundhog's Day?
Yeah, I celebrate.
So what's the new date?
The 16th, is that?
February 16th?
Yep.
At 3:00 p.m.?
Three o'clock.
Yep.
Will Don be back?
Yes. Okay. Any other public comment? Any commissioner comments? No comments from me, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Goes in the binder.